I call this meeting of Township High School District 211 Board of Education to order. May we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Cavell?
Here.
Mr. Kramer?
Here.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Here.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Here.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Here.
Mr. Young?
Here.
Mr. Lefever?
Here. Would everyone please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have a suggested motion that the board enter closed session to discuss minutes lawfully closed under the Open Meetings Act, appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees matter relating to an individual student probable or imminent litigation against affecting or on behalf of the public body and collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Lefever?
Aye. Alright, we have a suggested motion that the board return to open session. Could someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Lefever?
Aye. Alright, our first item of business now is public comments and hearings. We have Mr. De Pasquale.
Good evening, Board. I like your news to myself. I'm John De Pasqual. I've been a resident in District 211 for 35 years. I'm a business owner and a commercial property owner in the community. But before I get started, I want to thank the board for your service to our community. I know it takes a lot of time to sit on these boards and I appreciate you giving time away from your family and your friends and your businesses to serve our community. That being said, 35 years ago when I moved here, my uncle recommended Palatine area because he thought that the schools were good and the community was nice. And needless to say, I think he was right. But as my four daughters were getting ready to go to high school, I was a little worried about whether or not they were going to get the proper education because I had a very difficult time assessing all the different instruments that were out there as far as school ratings. But finally, I think I've come up with maybe the best way to evaluate that and that is I had four daughters that went to Framed High School. None of them were geniuses by any stretch of the imagination. They were regular students, got Bs, some As, unfortunately, a few Cs along the way, too. They weren't in AP classes. They're just your regular run-of-the-mill kids. And I was a little worried that they might get lost in the shuffle in a big school like Framed. Well, now that they graduated college, all four, one at the University of Texas, one at the University of Missouri, Illinois State and Southern Law University, all of them did better at the university level than they did at the high school level. And that, to me, was proof in the pudding that the district was doing an excellent job at preparing the kids for university academics. And they're all in different fields from being a CPA to being a school teacher to being in marketing. So I want to thank again the district for doing such a good job of preparing my daughters for life. I'm glad to say they all have jobs and none of them live in my basement, so I'm really thankful for that, believe me. Secondary, now that they've been out of school for eight years, as I said, it took me a while to get here, but I had the opportunity to use the schools for a sporting event. I actually used both, two high schools, Schaumburg and Hoffman Estates. And I went there to meet the custodians. One young was Ray and I think Octavio at Hoffman Estates. And I can tell you, I was unbelievably surprised. And I've probably been in 200 to 300 gymnasiums in the type of business that I am. I'm in the sports business. And I was just stunned at how professional and how patient they were and how willing they were to explain to me all the different options they had available at the school. And I got to tell you, I think that's hugely important, especially for someone like myself that doesn't have kids going to school. So when I get that Cook County tax bill, sometimes I'm afraid to open it, to be honest with you, you know? And I always wonder, you know, are we getting our value for our dollars spent? Well, when I went to that school and it was on very, very short notice, I think it was like two hour notice, I asked if I could come in and they were willing to meet me. I was amazed at how clean the schools were, just amazed. And so anyways, I went home and told my wife, wow, I had a great experience at District 211, man. It was pretty amazing. But to be honest, they're telling me he was a little bit skeptical and I kind of was wondering, you know, is it going to be that good on the back end when they have to deliver the service? Well, I can tell you that the custodial staff and the maintenance staff at those two high schools was nothing short of outstanding. These guys were present, available, and polite. And whether you realize that they are kind of like the face of the district out there. People come there probably, unfortunately, they probably see them more than they see you guys, alright? And the fact of the matter is, they do a great job. They've done it multiple times. So I wanted to say thank you to Mr. Cates for his leadership as far as, I believe that the administration is top-down and he sets the tone and I think that what they're doing is fantastic. And there's one last thing I just wanted to comment on. I want to thank the board for your vision in this way. First, in hiring Mr. Cates and also for retaining him. And I had the pleasure of knowing your prior superintendent, Ms. Rob, and I thought she was a very intelligent and capable woman. So when you guys were looking for a replacement, I was a little concerned, to say the least. And I think he's fantastic and I'll tell you a couple of the reasons why. As I said, I deal with not only government administration, but I deal with sports administration. I deal with people on the Olympic Committee and international federations. And I can say without a doubt, I really truly believe that Mr. Cates is one of the best that I've ever seen. And I'll give you one story in closing. We were having coffee and I was talking to Mr. Cates and, you know, we were just jibber-jabbing. And I said, well, tell me about the district. To be honest with you, I was thinking he was going to talk to me about the varsity teams and tell me that the debate team did good and, you know, the math club did good, et cetera, et cetera. Instead, he chose to talk about some less fortunate kids in our district and it kind of inspired me enough that I wanted to make a donation to the district, which I did. It wasn't a huge donation, but I wanted to put my money where my mouth is, you know? It's easy to talk the talk, but sometimes you actually got to walk the walk. Went home, spoke to my wife about it and then we decided we were going to talk to our employees. So the next morning, we had a staff meeting. We have a small company, about 50 people, and I told them about this story. So we decided that we could do a little bit better than what we had done and I called Mr. Cates and said, do you know of any other ways I could help other kids other than the district? And he recommended some community organizations in Palatine that had some budget restraints and different things, contacted them and they, you know, gave me some options in which, you know, maybe I could help and so we decided that we're able to help not only the grammar school kids, the high school kids, and the junior high school kids. So in closing, I just wanted to say that maybe the best way to sum it up is I think your superintendent is passionate, but I know a lot of passionate people. I'm involved with the Olympic Committee. Everybody's passionate. Very few of those people, when they're driven, are come passionate. And I appreciate Mr. Cates beating the voice for those kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here tonight who maybe didn't get a chance to sign up that wanted to address the board? If so, just raise your hand. Alright, since there is no one else, that will take us to our next item on the agenda, which is presentations. And we have a presentation about trauma-responsive schools. Dr. Cates?
We're very pleased tonight to present information to you. What we know is that the 12,000 students who enter our schools every day, they come to us many times having had more full of a day before they get to us than some people might experience long into the evening. And our schools have done a whole array of services and supports and work within the schools, within the staff, to recognize the differences and quite frankly, the impact that some of these circumstantial factors can have on young people. What we know is that these adverse experiences that you're going to learn a little bit more about, those impact kids' ability to learn. And what we know is that traditional schools sometimes don't adjust well to those adverse effects and some of the reactions that kids might have. I'd like to sum it up from my, my phrase is that when kids are having trouble, they don't need less school, they need more school. They don't need less time with us, they need more time with us. So we're going to describe to you tonight a little bit about how that takes shape in our schools and I'm going to let Mr. Kovac kick us off.
Thank you, Dr. Cates. Good evening, everybody. It's really my privilege to talk to you tonight, with you tonight, about a topic that I have had the opportunity to be so closely involved with over the last few years with people from across the district. And what a great just introduction, really. We just heard, I think, about the quality and responsiveness of our schools to our students. Because in the end, we want our students to come to school, we want them to feel connected, we want them to prepare for their lives after they're done being high school students. And that's what being successful is all about. A trauma-responsive school accounts for those objectives and supports all of our students to do their best. A trauma-responsive school recognizes that each student comes to school with some unique background and experiences that may get in the way. Those personal challenges are things that we have to account for when we are trying to help our students move forward. Tonight, I'm joined by Kim Glazer, Assistant Principal at Framed High School, Linda Sarafini, Dean of Students and Family Consumer Science Teacher at Hoffman Estates High School, and Callie Zanona, a school psychologist at the Higgins Education Center. They're joining us tonight to share some information about the ways that their schools have embraced the trauma-responsive school model and are using that framework for the benefit of our students. Last month, could you go back one, please? Last month, you heard about details from Dr. Small and from others about the value of career development and curricular opportunities that we provide to our students. And curriculum is a major component of our entire program. There's much more to what we do and what we offer for our students. It's the social-emotional well-being component that we're addressing here with you tonight and how we help to support students on that side of the equation. And that's where the trauma-responsive school model comes into play. I'm sure you recall this statement because it was just this past November that the Illinois Association of School Boards adopted an amendment to this. There's a line at the bottom that was recommended by you, the District 211 Board of Education, that recognized the value of trauma-responsive practices in a school's comprehensive program. And this is actually, I think, important because if you look at this position statement 1.01, this is the first thing that the IASB tells school boards. They put it right front and center to bring it in the spotlight. And I can't think of any greater acknowledgement of it than this example. And before we illustrate some of the specific examples of how District 211 has embraced this framework, I think it's worthwhile to just go over a few basic background pieces to make sure that we are all sharing some understandings. And although we could spend a full day on this, and many of the people in the room actually have done that and more, I'm just going to focus in on one key concept of the trauma-responsive framework. And that's the knowledge that childhood trauma often has a tremendously negative impact on an individual person's ability to function. Traumatic events such as being the victim of violence, living in poverty, losing a home, or struggling with mental health challenges all play a part in this. We call these traumatic experiences adverse childhood experiences, or ACEs. And as you can imagine, anyone dealing with a traumatic event has to find a way to cope. Young people tend to struggle with this primarily and when a young person experiences these traumatic events in multiples, the results can be very disruptive to their success. We know that more than half of all adults have at least one ACE. And a person with one ACE is almost guaranteed to have at least one more. We track these events on a scale of zero to 10 with each event counting as one. And when a person has more, it can be extremely impactful. You can see some examples of a person with four. We recognize this reality and using the trauma-responsive school framework, we are working with staff to shift their thinking. In the face of responding to students in need, our staff members are stopping to ask the question of what has this child done and are now asking, what has happened to this child? And it's that shift in thinking that helps us promote a shift in our school culture. Because we recognize that it's really our school's culture as a whole that is the place where trauma-responsive practices are embedded. In 2018, we formed a district-wide committee to implement these trauma-responsive practices and to explore the model. And we identified four key outcomes that we hope to achieve by transforming our school culture. And it's through pursuit of these objectives that we have implemented some common understandings. Specifically, we recognize that within District 211, a trauma-responsive culture has five pillars. The first is that the culture has to be built around relationships. It needs to help students learn to regulate their emotions, assist students to recover from difficult experiences. Learning needs to occur through meaningful and engaging academic activities. And the culture needs to encourage all people within the school community to contribute to that sense of community. Since we've set these definitions, we've set about the transformative actions within the school culture. And that's what you're going to hear some specific examples of this evening.
So the first one we're going to talk about is how we develop student-trusting, caring relationships. So trusted adults are one of the most important and consistent themes found in any trauma-related book or framework. The research shows that students have a very basic need for trusting, caring relationships. Long before we formally began looking into trauma framework in our district, we already were on the right path. While in PE wellness classes, our students log into our student readiness plan and identify a few trusted adults. As teachers, coaches, counselors, and administrators, we can access this information when a student has become dysregulated and then connect them with that adult. Our building, we can give them the greatest support in this way. For many of our students, we are the most consistent and stable adult in their lives and for many of them, we're also their second home. In the book, Fostering Resilient Learners, James Koemer said, "Students don't care to learn until we learn to care." This is one of the quotes that I'm most fond of. It is something that our staff really excels at. Teachers, TAs, student resource officers, student supervisors, our maintenance staff, and all of our support staff have made efforts to let our students in our building know that we all care. One of our math teachers, Ms. Cook, has a reputation with our students for being tough but extremely caring. Ms. Cook sets high expectations and believes all her students can succeed. One of her students, Lacy, with a history of discipline issues most related to class tardies, has never been tardy to her class. You can oftentimes find Ms. Cook and her talking and saying, "I must be your favorite teacher." This connection and relationship over the past year has made a significant difference in Lacy's behavior and motivation. Even on the most challenging days, Ms. Cook continues to support Lacy. We have seen this change with Lacy impact her overall grades and even an 80% improvement in behavior when we compare her first semester referrals to her second semester referrals. Another valued trusted adult in our building is Officer Redman, who works with many of our students during extremely difficult situations. The support and care he offers is essential to the intervention office. Back in September, we had a student with a complicated family situation. Officer Redman was there to offer guidance and support. He has also taken the time to check in with this student routinely. The safety and security he offers our building is unmistakable, but his compassion and willingness to learn and listen to our students is very commendable. As you know, at Hoffman, we are on the block schedule. For many of our staff, this means we only see our students every other day. Or if we are approaching a weekend, it could be as many as four days. This can be really a long stretch when you have a concern about a student. Student supervisors will often see our students on a daily basis, while they are greeting students entering the building in the morning, when delivering passes throughout the day, and when supervising the many areas of our building. Our student supervisors have unique opportunities to have conversations with our students. They establish these trusting relationships. These relationships are an integral part of our building, our community, and our culture. It can be quite common to hear some of our students refer to our supervisors as Aunt Lori or Grandma Sue. In these relationships, we can often have this, offer our students the safety and support that they need in the day-to-day. Also, our maintenance staff is often thought to be behind the scenes in our building. However, Jimmy, one of our maintenance staff, is definitely around for everyone to see. Some know him as the Amazon Man. He often is delivering all of our packages, so he has the Amazon cart. Jimmy has been very supportive to many of our students. And last semester, while on his way to deliver packages, in the morning Jimmy noticed a student, Michaela, crying near her locker. Rather than just pass by, Jimmy stopped, sat down next to her, and asked why she was so upset. Through that conversation, he found that she had had some friend troubles, had some relationship troubles, she was suffering through some grades, and was just feeling generally overwhelmed. His support in that conversation really helped Michaela get through the day. He continued to build this connection over the semester and that connection really helped Michaela now get stronger through the semester. He has since routinely checked, continued to check in with her and individuals like this are only a handful of examples that we have in our amazing building that work and develop relationships as we see within our building and our community. Emotional regulation is the ability to respond to the ongoing demands of daily life while reacting with emotions that are socially tolerable and acceptable. The most adverse impact following trauma is a disruption to the body's physiology that impairs emotional regulation. The stress response impacts the brain in ways that make controlling emotions and behavior difficult. That is why it is imperative that schools where students spend the majority of their time during childhood and adolescence, provide instruction, opportunities, and safe, supportive places where youth can learn and practice these essential life skills. Whether it be offering a calm alternative to the sometimes loud and triggering activity of daily PE in the form of yoga and meditation, or giving students the opportunity to practice the coping skill of engaging in music during their school day, the Higgins Education Center strives to create an environment that fosters resilience and offers support to students. Individual and environmental factors that foster resilience and recovery are both external and internal resources that help youth who have experienced trauma manage their reactions to traumatic experiences in a healthy manner. Restorative justice practices represent one powerful example of this. From having students craft an apology letter after breaking a rule on the bus, to creating and facilitating a presentation for other students on the dangers of vaping, volunteering to help the maintenance staff after damaging property, or engaging a restorative justice peace circle where students can express their thoughts and feelings in an adult-guided safe place, where in this picture was taking place after several students engaged in an online altercation with one another. Another example of how we foster resilience at the Higgins Education Center is our mentoring program, which pairs one student with one trusted adult for brief weekly check-ins. Understanding youth responses to challenges and having trauma-informed responses are essential for educators aiming to maximize students' academic and social-emotional potential. Supporting a student who may experience a traumatic life event can potentially prevent unwanted disruptive behaviors in the classroom. Just last week, JJ, a student who has been the victim of extreme violence in the past and whose family was struggling to afford his daily medication for ADHD, requested to use the Higgins Education Center sensory room, a place where any student can go to take a break with adult supervision and support to clear his thoughts and expend some energy by running on the treadmill after a wellness lesson on decision-making. A period later, Rita, a young woman who has witnessed much gang violence in her neighborhood, requested a quiet space to self-soothe after hearing several doors slam loudly outside of her classroom and experiencing a flashback. Additionally, students at Higgins have access to the supported learning center throughout the day, which is staffed by an adult every period and provides a quiet place to complete work or take an exam, a smaller environment to use coping skills such as doing artwork, or access to psychoeducational materials on topics like stress management and emotional regulation. Enacting trauma-responsive practices with regards to emotional and behavioral regulation helps students develop problem-solving and stress-management skills, connect with healthy support systems, and restores a sense of control and school-connected-ness.
The Framed High School Professional Development Team has focused its work on creating a layered approach to our application of trauma-responsive practices and the larger trauma-responsive framework. The building team has been working to provide Fram staff with a professional development series this school year that is acutely focused on fostering resilience in students. This approach has coupled professional development for educators that is focused on the theory and science that founds the trauma-responsive framework with clear guidance and robust collaboration on implementing specific strategies, skills, and techniques across the larger school community to cultivate resilience in our students. Through the Framed High School team's work with multiple professional resources developed by experts in the field of trauma science, we have embraced a definition of resilience that has guided our execution of trauma-responsive practices. Resilience is a student's ability to successfully move through a season of adversity by utilizing skills of self-regulation and the support of trusted connections. A resilient student believes they are worthy and are capable of overcoming challenges. Through the work of Framed High School Problem-Solving Teams, members of the Student Services Department and Assistant Principal's Office approach student needs and challenges with a commitment to serving the whole student in their development of personal resilience. Framed Problem-Solving Teams work collaboratively to create interventions that promote regulation, self-confidence, and a sense of belonging in our students. Over multiple years, these teams have created and employed a systemic and therapeutic response to chronic absenteeism that includes inviting families of chronically absent students into our building, to meet with individualized student support teams in an effort to identify obstacles to school attendance, and then tailor a very specific system of interventions and responses to assist the student in reintegrating into the school community after significant absence, as well as to strengthen the partnership between the school and our students' families in the pursuit of overall student wellness. Through the support of the District 211 Foundation, the Fram team has been able to further evolve our approach to chronic absenteeism by developing and implementing a student incentive program called Everyday Counts during the 2019-2020 school year. This program supports a student's regular attendance to school by celebrating daily successes and enhancing relationships with a variety of trusted adults in the school building. Through the Everyday Counts program, the team at Fram engaged with and provided resources to 54 students who have historically struggled with regular school attendance in the wake of traumatic experiences. Through the implementation of the Everyday Counts program during the first semester of this school year, these 54 students engaged in over 200 individual contacts with one or more Fram staff members. As a result of this work, approximately 40% of students participating in the program improved their attendance during the first semester of this year. Additionally, seven of our students improved their attendance rate by 10 or more percent. Kara is a junior at Fram who improved her attendance rate over 11% during her participation in the Everyday Counts program. According to Kara, she felt the most meaningful part of our program was staff acknowledging her hard work and increased commitment in attending school. Kara told me that it felt nice to be noticed and recognized by her school for making dedicated, positive changes to her attendance. By creating and implementing systems that cultivate trusting and caring relationships within our school community, the Fram Problem-Solving Teams support the development of resilience in our students.
In order to promote academic engagement, Hoffman Estates High School has established an innovative academic intervention support program where students are placed into three tiers of support based on grades. The tiers are HAWK Academic Center, referred to as the HAWK, which is the most restrictive offering of an approximate 1-5 teacher-student ratio. Next, we also have a study lab where students are at a 1-30 or 40 student-teacher ratio. And then finally, we have seminar where students can earn time to be in the media center and then self-regulate their academic achievement. We have assigned point values to each grade and then calculate those values determined on their academic intervention. Every three weeks, we monitor all 1,967 of our students' grades and move them between these three supports as needed. This helps us ensure that each student is having the support and will allow them to engage at, engage and connect to content in a way that best suits their learning style and reach for optimal achievement.
For many educators, it can be very difficult to accept that we oftentimes For many educators, it can be very difficult to accept that we oftentimes cannot shield our students from trauma. It is unfortunately inevitable that we will encounter students in our classrooms whose lives are in the midst of or still experiencing the reverberating effects of personal trauma. As a result, we have learned that it is crucial that we cultivate classroom communities that promote consistency, positivity, and attachment in an effort to build resilience in our students. The educators at Fremd High School have done extensive work to implement trauma-responsive classroom practices this school year that create an important sense of school community for all students. Teachers in the Fremd Special Education Department have established practices to promote pro-social behaviors in their classroom in a support of students' positive connections to the classroom experience. Multiple teachers in this department have adapted their lesson structures this school year to allow for increased student reflection about and personal connection to the content they are studying. Mr. Felberg, a teacher in the department, explains how taking time at the beginning of each class period to connect with students and ensure their regulation and readiness to learn increases the effectiveness of the remainder of the class period. He explains how making a slight adjustment such as this on a daily basis results in more students who are smiling and contributing in class and who feel noticeably comfortable with, respected by, and listened to by their teachers. As a result, Mr. Felberg and other teachers in his department are noticing an increased number of students who are willing to take risks in their critical contributions to classroom discussion and a greater sense of more unified learning communities within their courses. Multiple Fremd science teachers have created avenues for students to express gratitude during the process of academic inquiry. In Ms. Shawna's classroom community, students participate in the Thankful Thursday activities on a weekly basis. Time is set aside to give students a voice in expressing their appreciation of their learning partner's contributions to their studies and their personal successes over the past week. Kayden is a freshman in Advanced Biology, and he told me how the practice of reflecting on and communicating gratitude to his peers on a regular basis has helped his lab group in biology to improve their team skills of communication and problem-solving when working in complex learning situations. He then went on to express to me that he's been able to transfer the skills that he's cultivated through the Thankful Thursday activities with Ms. Shawna to other courses in his academic schedule. Practices such as this reinforce for our students that commitments to positive trusting relationships within the school community foster perseverance, critical thinking, and metacognition, crucial components to academic success. Finally, the entire math department at Fremd has made a commitment to creating a space in our school building that is safe and welcoming to all students, even those who are just passing through when moving from class to class. The High Five Hallway, as it has become known, is a place where students can anticipate a smiling staff member waiting to share an encouraging high five with them at each classroom door during our passing periods. Mr. Hernandez is a math teacher at Fremd, and he explains how taking the time during passing periods to greet his students as they enter his classroom allows him the opportunity to make unique connections with his kids, engage their individual temperament, and any potential needs they might have prior to the class period starting. Mr. Hernandez is then able to use the data he efficiently gathers from these personalized student interactions to inform his instructional decisions on a class-by-class basis. By making an intentional commitment to being visible, engaging, and welcoming to all students who move through their space of the building, the teachers of our math department set the tone for student perseverance and engagement in the face of academically rigorous coursework. This seemingly small gesture by staff is in actuality a founding component of a deep investment in regulating relationships with individual students. The trauma-responsive framework does not minimize academic expectations for students. As research informs and our experiences at Fremd High School have exemplified, the framework works in concert with our expectations for students' academic success by fostering meaningful attachment to a safe and welcoming learning community.
The stories and the examples that you heard this evening illustrate the way that our schools are currently implementing trauma-responsive practices as part of their school culture. We also recognize that school culture is something that is established over generations as students and staff work together to create the environment that promotes the right opportunities for our students to be successful. And this commitment that we have to implementing trauma-responsive practices is not limited to this year. It is a long-term commitment that will continue in the coming years as we explore new opportunities and new ways to support our students and meet them where they are and take that into the years to follow. With that, we would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions?
Yes, I'd like to hear a little bit more information about, you mentioned in students in wellness classes log into their student readiness plans. And then, I'm sorry, it was a little bit difficult for me to hear exactly what was said. When they're dysregulated, they can somehow through the readiness plan connect with their trusted adult?
So when we find, yeah, so when we find a student that becomes dysregulated, any faculty or staff member can log into the student readiness plan, and we can log in and figure out who that student's trusted adult is. And so if we're not connecting or being able to help them work through whatever the situation is, we can pull in that trusted adult and help them work through the situation. Because a lot of times, if I, for example, if I'm working with a student and they're not responding to me or not helping them work through it, but maybe I know another teacher is because I've logged in and I can see that maybe Ms. Cook is or another staff member is, I can go reach out to that staff member and just say, hey, you know, Lacey or Johnny or whoever is, they're really struggling right now, do you have a moment, can you come help me work through this with them?
That's nice.
Yeah, it's really great to have that, that as a resource.
This is close to my heart. I had three of the five growing up, and I had a really close relationship. It wasn't formalized, of course, because I'm not a 22-year-old, but I had a really close relationship with a teacher that, that was, was one of the reasons that I was able to succeed. So I appreciate that we've kind of formalized this and we've made a long-term commitment to making sure our kids have every opportunity to develop those relationships because they're so important. My question is, when, when that trauma that students are experiencing like mine was ongoing and, and at home, you know, when they're talking to their trusted adult or even accessing social work or school psychologist services, how are we protecting their confidentiality when some of the trauma that they're experiencing is waiting for them when they go home, if that makes sense?
It does. As a school psychologist, we ensure students' confidentiality with what they share unless there's a danger to themselves or others, or they have reported that they would be going home to a dangerous situation, in which case, you know, and we inform all students when they meet with us that that's the case.
That your mandatory reporter is the person.
Exactly, exactly. Right. And then we would go through the proper channels to link in the appropriate officials and resources for them to ensure that they are going to a safe place and hook their family up with resources that may help the home situation down the road.
That's great. I just have a couple more questions. I was really excited to hear about the Everyday Counts program. So I'm wondering when, and that was taking place at Fremd.
That's at Fremd.
So I'm wondering, when we have a program like that, that's so successful and so promising at one school, I mean, is there resource sharing then that can be given to other District 211 schools that might want to use that themselves? How do we, I mean, do we, we share those resources among all our schools?
If you don't mind, I'll, I'll jump in on that. So I appreciate the question. I mentioned how a lot of this work was formalized in 2018. That was the result of a district-wide committee with representatives from all of our schools working together. And then as they came to agreements about best practices, each school was given autonomy to implement things that best matched their own school's cultures. But we continue to convene as a group and have the opportunity to share back and forth the successes that we're experiencing or the challenges that we may be facing so that we can help each other and learn from one another.
Thank you. I really appreciated the presentation.
Thank you.
I, I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. And I thank you for all you do and the staffs at all of our schools. And I think that network of support is, is really important, and maybe it really needs to be more than just one or two people. You know, at least three, four, five is, would be really good. I'd also like to thank you for promoting more of the resilience, because I think that's so important to help our young people see that they can succeed, that they can overcome, and that they've got the support to be able to do it because it teaches a lot of life skills. And I think that that's, that's really important. And as you were talking, I was making some notes, and then you came to gratitude. And that was one of the things I put down, because as you know, I mean, gratitude is one of those intangible things, and it's psychological, and it's that feel-good feeling that you have. And I think it's not just the students, it also comes full circle, because if the teacher is doing these things and the compliments and, and moving forward, it, it helps them, which helps the kids, and you just kind of keep that cycle going, which is absolutely outstanding, which is what you want. So I, I thank you for, for that. And I know the state is looking at social-emotional learning and trying to make certain that all of our schools, well, 800 and whatever in, in the state of Illinois, are providing this. So I think we are really setting a, a good foundation and a good example. So, thank you, thank you, Dr. Cates, Dr. Small, and, and the staff. So, thank you very much.
I had a, like, two or three questions. I'll just rattle them off and let you go. First, thank you for the presentation. It's, it's very informative. There was a mention of season of adversity and overcoming that. Can you just define that a little bit? And then with our trusted adults, is there a situation where some adults may not necessarily be equipped to be that trusted adult? And what are either the trainings to, to equip our staff or the tools that we take and implement to not put certain staff members into that trusted adult position which they may choose not to be comfortable being placed in? And then finally, with implementing some of this, if you could speak to some of the challenges that presented itself and that you might have had to overcome in implementing this process? Thanks.
So with trusted adults, we have students list multiple trusted adults, and so we work together usually typically as a team. So depending on when the student comes to us and what that situation may be, so whether it is an emotional thing, a psychological, physical thing, we may choose which trusted adult we would refer to. We usually feel that if the student has chosen that adult to be their trusted adult, there's some kind of personal connection that they have felt that they at least can feel they can open up to. And then we also know, we let our staff know and our, our faculty know that if they are dealing with a situation they are not comfortable with, that they can then defer that to, we have a crisis team always on staff, that they can then bring that person down, and then we would hand it over to our crisis team to be there for the support for that.
So there is an opt-out?
Absolutely, yes, yes. So they, it is never left just for them.
We also notify all of the adults who are named multiple times during the course of a school year, because a student may actually change their designee at some point in time. And so we provide them awareness that they have been selected and identified and offer some guidance through our communication to them in that role.
With regards to the staff training at the start of the school year, and usually in conjunction with National Suicide Awareness and Prevention Week, also, staff are given training on what to do if a student discloses some really heavy or scary stuff so that they feel supported and they know who they can then immediately bring that student to, to receive assistance.
I can speak to the idea of a season of adversity. You know, we oftentimes, in, in my role in the Assistant Principal's Office and working very closely with our Student Services Department members, we will learn of a student facing a fairly monumental challenge, the long-term illness of a parent, a divorce, a change in housing, something that we aren't necessarily going to be able to fix for them immediately. But what we try to do is come alongside them and help them to, you know, learn and rely upon those skills of self-regulation, the adults that they have in the building. Sometimes for some of our students, it's the stability of knowing every day, Monday through Friday, from 11:10 to 12:00 p.m., I can just do math and I can put these other things aside. So, that's sort of what I was speaking to when I was addressing the season of adversity. As far as some challenges that we anticipated, at least at Fremd, was a concern from staff that perhaps we would be setting down our academic expectations to pick up these social-emotional ones. And so when we entered into the school year, that was very intentional for us to try to illustrate how a commitment to some of these practices will actually increase for our students, their ability to, to take on these rigorous expectations that we have for them academically. And as David Felberg, our special education teacher, when he and I were talking, he said, "It's so funny, you just take three, four minutes to check in with everybody, see how they're doing, address any needs at the beginning, and the, the 46 that come after just fly so seamlessly, because you've sort of addressed those needs of the kids up front." So we, we anticipated that challenge and that concern from our staff, so we tried to address it immediately, and we're getting feedback that they're, they're really seeing the value and, and making that investment.
Yeah, and as we moved into this trauma model, there were a lot of staff and faculty that were concerned that they were going to have to become psychologists and stuff like that. That was definitely one of their concerns. Well, am I going to have to be a therapist for, for these, these kids? And we very quickly reassure them that's not the expectation that, that we have staff for that, that our, our want for them is to be the daily check-in, to be there for them, to give them the daily support, and that if a student does become dysregulated, to be that initial person that can say, hey, I, I recognize there's something going on with you, let me walk you down to the right person. Let me get you connected. You know, let me be that person who can sit with you for those minutes and then help you, get you to where you need to be. So that's kind of that role of that trusted adult. And then I'll stay with you as long as you need, and then once we know you're, you're good, then I'm going to step out. So, we've made it very clear to staff that they're not expected to be the social worker or the psychologist.
Another challenge, I think, is that by bringing attention to student trauma, sometimes that brings up adult experiences and traumas that they may have had as well. And as you guys saw on the slide, over 63% of us have experienced at least one or more of the ACEs. So we've taken a huge focus on promoting staff self-care. And I know it's across the district, various schools have built meditation rooms, they've offered Monday mindfulness minutes for staff. Some of the schools are offering yoga that staff can drop in on and just participate in. So we've put a big focus as well on staff self-care, and oftentimes you'll hear us at the Higgins Education Center saying, "You have to put on your own oxygen mask first." So, you know, an airplane analogy. But we've really focused on trying to promote staff taking care of themselves so that they can be the best version of themselves to provide the best education for our students.
I have a few short comments. First of all, thank you very much for the presentation. Last year, the North Cook Division of IASB at its dinner meeting hosted a couple of doctors who spoke about trauma from Comer's Children's Hospital and I believe another practice, talking about trauma and how it's not a one-time thing, but, but often trauma is ongoing, and the people that are experiencing it, it's not like you heard a gunshot go off and now I'm traumatic. You know, it's a traumatic thing, but rather it's the trauma that somebody's experiencing. So I'm really excited and, and pleased to see that we're taking more, more of a look at the child's psychology and not just their academics, and how one definitely impacts the other, and that they have to have a good psychological well-being in order to have a good academic well-being. So thank you for that. I also want to thank Mrs. Klimkowitz for bringing the, the change to the position statement before this board, which then went before the, the delegate assembly and was, was passed at the IASB and state level. So thank you very much for that. One of the things about trauma and some of the things that you even talked about here is, one of those, those different ACEs is abuse. And it's not just abuse in the home, but it's, it could be abuse between peers, from bullying to more severe, not that bullying's not severe, but more physical and, and even more psychologically harming to someone. So I'm really, really happy that, that we're looking at the whole child, and we hear about, a lot about that from, from the wellness perspective. And I'm really, really happy that, to be part of this, this board in the school district and that we're looking at the whole child and not just one particular aspect. So thank you for your work. I know it's very valuable to the district as well.
Thank you.
I also want to thank you for your work, but I do have one thing that kind of popped in my head. When you were talking about the custodial staff being kind of the trusted adult, is this kind of training to all the, your staff up and down? I mean, if somebody walks up to a custodial staff- I mean, if somebody walks up to a custodial staff or kitchen person, are they to then report it to the administration then, or...
Anybody in our building would be known as like a mandated reporter, that they, you know, that if you're working with children, they need to report things. But any person in our building who's, you know, around children and working with children knows that they should be reporting anything. But anytime they're with children, they are going to be, there's going to be a natural building of relationships. I mean, you know, kids are going to flock to some people more than other people, some flock to the lunch lady, some, you know, are going to be the student supervisor. And so just in building those natural relationships, that's where they kind of come about. But yes, our staff knows that, you know, if things become more than just having that normal conversation of like, "Hey, kid, it's going to be okay," then that it should be directed to somebody else who can handle and support that student more.
Or at least support the staff member directing them on how to proceed.
Mr. Young, I think the key here is that we recognize this is not a teacher-only effort.
Right.
This is everyone in the building working together with a common framework. And there are specific efforts in the schools to bring in the support staff and others who are not classroom teachers to be aware of and involved in the activities.
Yeah. There's many models out there of trauma framework, and as we move through the different framework models, part of it is making sure that all staff in all building, pretty much, one of the trainings we went to, we kind of made the funny comment of saying door-to-floor, making sure that from the moment a student walks in the building, any part of the building, whether they're sitting on the floor, standing, walking, any person that is in that building that they can come in contact with, they should have some kind of trauma knowledge so that they can assist the student. So it does, it's all-inclusive for all staff, not just teacher, not just administrator, not just counselor.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so that's our goal.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
All right. The next item of business we have is our consent agenda. We have a suggested motion that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Lefever?
Aye. Next, we have our special reports. First is Freedom of Information Act requests. Next report is a class-sized committee report. Oh, you know what? Do we have, no, that's okay, yeah. Any questions on the class-sized committee report? All right, that will bring us to our 2020-2021 financial calendar, including the budget and levy sequence. Any questions here? That will bring us to unfinished business. First, we have a proposed policy revision, medication administration in schools. The suggested motion is that the board policy file, JHCD, medication administration in schools be revised as proposed and included in the board policy manual. Further, that the superintendent be directed to make appropriate distribution.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. That will bring us to student user fees for 2020-2021. We have three suggested motions. We're going to break it up into more than that. We're going to take the first two as they stand, and what is otherwise all incorporated in number three, we've had a request that we take each one of those items as a separate motion, which we will do when we get there. First suggested motion, that for the remainder of the 2019-2020 school year, the board waive the current fee of 30 cents for reduced-price breakfast with milk for students and the current fee of 40 cents for reduced-price lunch with milk for students who qualify for reduced-price meals. And further, that for the 2020-2021 school year, the fees for breakfast and lunch, including milk, be waived for students who qualify for reduced-price meals. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Nay.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Lefever?
Aye. That motion carries. Our second motion is that the board waive the current outstanding fee balances for 2019-2020, instruction textbook fees for students who have an established deferred fee payment plan. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Checking.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Lefever?
Aye. Now, the next suggested motion is that for the 2020-2021 school year, the student textbook instructional supply fee remain at $170. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Discussion? I want to give an overarching concept of where I'm coming from for each one of these fees. I think we have an opportunity to reduce the burden on middle-class families. Okay, so that is my overarching concern. Specifically, this one, I think we have to charge something for textbooks and instruction. I think that $170 is too high. I would be happy with $50.
And just to reiterate my point from the budget and finance meeting, all of the other fees, I believe, are optional. This one has a mandatory registration fee. I think if you're already paying property taxes, you're already supporting any non-optional fees, and so I'm opposed to a fee that is required to get in the door to our school.
I think since we're looking at waiving some other cost-related items and really helping our students, I think that the numbers we've been given is it costs us $210 for the materials and so on. And, you know, as we discussed during our finance committee meeting, when you look at it, you know, education really isn't free. It'd be nice if it was, but we have to pay for these materials. So I think, you know, some type of a fee is supported and needed, and I'm comfortable with the $170 because we're the lowest in the area when you take a look at where the other school districts stand.
I'm comfortable with $170 because of the concessions that we were making with the other fees. I'm also interested in making our schools as affordable as humanly possible and recognizing that there's a substantial increase in a population of people who do not qualify for free meals and do not necessarily qualify for reduced meals, but whose families do not make much more than those thresholds. And, you know, income, like wages remaining as stagnant as they are, you know, things are really tough, and it's that segment of families that I really worry about, both nationally and then, of course, definitely in the suburbs. So I'm interested in keeping our fees as low as is possible, and, you know, I had made my point of view clear at the budget meeting. I really appreciate the waiving of these other fees that make me feel, you know, reasonably comfortable with approving the fee as it's set out for this year.
I'm going to add one more thing as we talk about this. I know as a board, board governance is really important, and we had a good discussion at the finance committee, which I think was important, but then we give direction to the administration. This is what we would like you to take a look at and give us back our recommendation. And I can tell that they looked at that, they made some concessions, made some changes, looking at what's in the best interests of the kids and especially the kids that might be coming from the households that are in need, and that's the way the board should be functioning. So now this is where we're at, where we take it to the vote, and we go from there.
And to echo Ms. Cavell's point, I agree that our population has trouble making ends meet. I hope that we remember that at levy time when we're increasing the property taxes because I think that's what should really be funding that fee for the registration.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
No.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Nay.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Lefever?
Aye. That motion carries. Next, again, for the 2020-2021 school year, we have a suggested motion that the driver education behind-the-wheel fee remain at $400 for the regular school year. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Discussion. The state set a limit of 250. I think there's a reason for it. It's standardized. I don't know why we're asking for $400.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
No.
Mr. Lefever?
Aye. Next, for the 2020-21 school year, we have a suggested motion that the student parking user fee remain at $75 per semester. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Discussion. I think that, you know, this one, we talked about it in the budget and finance committee meeting, I think that we need to revisit as part of the fee structure, a separation between those who need to park at school and those who don't need to park at school. Right now, it seems to be ad hoc and at large. It's not a fee issue, it's a policy issue, but on top of that, I think $40 would be reasonable to charge people to park instead of 75.
How long's it been, $75?
I want to say we raised it three years ago.
Roll call.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
No.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Lefever?
Aye. Again, for the 2020-2021 school year, we have a suggested motion that the under 1.5-mile transportation fee remain at $200 per year. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Lefever?
Aye. We have a suggested motion that for the 2020-2021 school year, that the late registration fee for transportation remain at $35. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Oh, did you want to add to that, and that the late fee be imposed on registration payments received after July?
Yeah, sure. Yep. Like Ms. Klimkowitz said, please, yes. Is everyone clear on what the motion is?
Could you repeat it?
Yeah, I can repeat it. For the 2020-21 school year, that the late registration fee for transportation remain at $35, and the late fee be imposed on registration payments received after July 1, 2020. That's the motion.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Lefever?
Aye. We have a suggested motion for the 2020-2021 school year, the price of a standard school breakfast be set at $1.65 for students, and that lunch prices be set at $2.55, $2.85, and $3.10, including milk, for students. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Lefever?
Aye. That motion carries. That will bring us to new business. We have in-service dates for the 2020-2021 school year. The suggested motion is that the Board of Education approves September 3, 2020, October 14, 2020, November 6, 2020, February 12, 2021, February 19, 2021, and May 14, 2021, as shortened days for in-service training of certified staff and special events, of which each school may choose a maximum of two days for 2020-2021.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Next, we have a proposed policy revision, drug and alcohol-free workplace. I believe this is our first time, so this is just for information. Any questions here? Okay, that will bring us to our second proposed policy revision, student appearance policy. Again, just our first reading, so any questions here?
Can you, what is the change in the policy?
It looks like the change is to add the word cannabis?
It is. It's instead of...
To their apparel.
So they can or cannot wear that?
Cannot.
They cannot wear that? Okay, thank you.
So for all these proposed policies, when they come, the attached policy that appears in here usually has the change highlighted in red, so you can note that as you review the materials. All right, that will bring us to our next proposed policy revision, student conduct. Again, first reading. Any questions here? Okay, that will bring us to board member expenses. Suggested motion that the Board of Education approve the preapproval form for future expense reimbursement for Robert Lefever to attend the IASB North Cook Spring Dinner Meeting on March 18, 2020, as submitted.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Lefever?
Aye. Next, we have potential topics for future discussion. Anyone? Okay.
Going forward, I know that, I'm going to go back to the fees. We approved the summer fees last meeting, but I think we found ourselves to be in a bind because of the timing. So a topic for future discussion at a time to be determined would be relooking at the summer school fees. I just don't have to schedule it. Perhaps the best time would be in the summertime.
That will bring us to committee reports. First, we have Northwest Suburban Special Education Organization. I believe Ms. Klimkowitz.
I do. I have it. All right, NSSEO. We met February 5th. We had a bus dedication. We had gotten a new wheelchair-accessible bus, and that bus is dedicated to Bob Zemek. He was a District 214 board member who served as the liaison on NSSEO, so he was on for about 23 years. And he passed away in 2011. The foundation wanted to do something, so they started to collect money for the bus, which will be a tremendous, it's a smaller bus for them. So it'll be really wonderful for them to be able to use that for some of their students to get to, to work sites and other places. Um, the bus ran about 70,000, so that's why it took them a number of years to get. There was another special recognition. It was, um, a lady by the name of Bridgette Anderson and she's, uh, NSSEO River Trails classroom teacher and she was, received an award from the Village of Mount Prospect, their Open Arms Shining Star. And a parent had recommended her, uh, because of the service that she has provided, not only to, to her child, to that child, but to all of the special needs students. And then, as, as, um, uh, we have the shining star moment, there was, um, a young person who, uh, is a seventh grader at District 25 School in Arlington Heights and he was recognized for, um, he's, he's attending minor school and he was recognized for his ability to be able to transition to his home school, which is in Arlington Heights, getting, um, at least coming in, uh, for two classes late in the afternoon and hopefully going to three. So it's, it's the ability of, of having the kids getting back into their community school, which is just real exciting. They also talked about, um, when Dr. Hackett gave us her report, uh, she talked about state and federal updates. There's, um, a Senate bill, 2281, that transition bill, which I'm not certain, we haven't talked about it yet to see how it's going to affect us, but that's the transition bill where, uh, s- special needs students, uh, can stay through age 22 to the end of the school year. Cause right now, when someone turns 22, then they, they leave the special ed program. So they're still in discussions in regards to that, um, with the sponsors and maybe other organizations, talking about what some of the effects are going to be and maybe what some of the additional costs might be in regards to that. The finance advisory committee has started to meet, so they met January 23rd. They talked about enrollment, staffing, um, increases are going to be based on CPI. So they're looking to gather all the information and, uh, uh, business officials from the member districts get together along with, uh, other people there and take a look at those needs. It will come back to the NSSEO board April 1st. We'll be able to talk about it and then bring it back to our board and then the official vote will be, uh, in June. There were several people that also attended what was called the Illinois K-12 Data Privacy and Cyber Security Summit. I don't know if we had anyone that, that attended that, but, uh, Julie Gillick, who is the business manager, and several other people attended that. And the focus was on data privacy and cybersecurity. So really taking a look at that because the schools have, you know, so much personal information. Um, so they got some, some good information on, uh, you know, policies, regulations, prevention, planning and interventions and, and responses in regards to that. So it was, it was a full meeting. Um, the last item I wanted to share is about the, uh, Facility Planning Committee update. Uh, we've talked about the gym that is really needed over at Timber Ridge. So, um, right now, they've been able to set aside $5.2 million. It's probably going to cost about $6 million to, to put their gym on. But they're going to start finalizing the construction documents, uh, March of this year and working on the budget and everything else that needs to be. And hopefully by April of 2021, they'll start construction. So it's, it's real exciting because these are the kids that have some behavioral issues and being able to give them a full-size gym and being able to participate in some of the activities would be really great. So, thank you.
I, I have a question. If they got $5.2 million, but it's going to cost six and they're going to start construction?
Hopefully, oh, well, you know, it's one of those math things. They're, the, they will know, um...
And I don't mean to make it a technical detail question, but just in concept.
There will be more money that'll be coming in this year. Um, and if they have, uh, probably part of their budget and some extra funds left over, I think that's kind of what we're looking at.
Okay. Thank you.
Cause we do get money back at the end of the year, um, each of the school districts, if there's funds that are left over. And I don't remember what the formula is. Each of the school districts get a portion of it back. And, you know, some of those funds that, um, I'm sorry, I'm going, getting carried away. But anyhow, there, there, there is a plan to have some money in there to, to get closer to that $6 million.
Thank you. Uh, next, we have Edred and Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Okay, I'll try not to be real long on that one. Well, we attended the dinner. Several of us, uh, were at the dinner and, uh, former Senate President John Colleton spoke. He was interesting. Um, I think the highlight that I took away from there was, um, they're looking to make some changes to the TIF, which I think is real exciting and I don't remember what the, uh, the recommendation was. But anyhow, instead of it being 23 years for a TIF, shorten, shortening it because usually by the 10th year, you know if that company or business is going to succeed or fail. So that was kind of the takeaway from, from the dinner. So maybe you want to add something from the dinner?
Was there the finance meeting after that, uh, was there anything we wanted to cover from the discussion at the, the Friday meeting?
Oh, Friday? I've got Friday. Okay. I got Friday. But, so that, from the dinner, he was interesting. Um, as far as Friday's meeting, we did have a presentation from one of the attorneys from Franzic and they talked about some new union guidelines that are coming into play. So I'm not sure how these are going to affect us, how this will all play out. And I think one of the things she pointed out was, we're going to see what happens. Um, they also talked about the Property Tax Relief Task Force. Um, they've changed, they're still working on that. They're changing the timeframe for TIFs. Um, again, the special ed question came up about age 22. They're also looking at, you know, mandatory teacher training, um, making some, uh, rule changes, I guess, to that. And getting people that are highly qualified. What else? I think that, that was kind of the, the highlight of it. And then they had a presentation from Curriculum Associates about some, um, programs that they have available for, for schools, which sounds like, you know, it's a curriculum developed by this company and, which is good and brings things forward. Um, so they gave a presentation.
Just to clarify, was the discussion regarding the, the changes to union policy similar to what they've done with the state? Where in order to opt out, you have to go through the union? If you don't want your dues collected in, in response to Janus, you have to go to your union rep versus coming to the district or working directly with the employer?
Um, I do have the handout from there. What I could do is, um, ask Sally to maybe make a, a copy and scan it into everyone because it does, it does talk about it in here.
Okay.
Okay? So we'll do that unless maybe Dr. Keys wants to highlight something.
That's great. I had sent a brief summary out when that, uh, those legislative changes first came out and I can resend that, but I think it'd be helpful for the board to know those. Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Uh, next, we have the Budget and Finance Committee. Uh, good meeting. Almost everybody was there. We got a tremendous amount of context about the fees and, uh, a reference point for why the fees are, what they are and, um, how they compare to elsewhere. Uh, in addition, uh, good presentation on the budget and levy planning process. All right, uh, that will bring us to partners for our community, uh, Evening Community Services. And Mark?
The committee met in the last week of January to review the, uh, uh, resumption of services after winter break. Uh, it was encouraging to, uh, learn that nearly 150 individual people have accessed services at the center during the month of January and, uh, just celebrate the, uh, start of the second semester for the adult ESL classes.
Thank you. And finally, we have Parent Connections and Communications. Ms. Cavell?
Uh, parents, um, several items. Parents really appreciated the info about the coronavirus being posted on the district website rather than presented as an email or a text alert. Felt like it kept unneeded anxiety levels down, so appreciated that. Um, there were some questions, uh, from parents about what information had been distributed about the coronavirus to staff, um, who might be asked, you know, random questions at the beginning of class. And so we talked about, uh, about that and, um, how to make sure everybody's on the same page in terms of information like this. We also talked about, uh, the, you know, the financial report that we produced. Parents really appreciated the page that had all of the graphics on there. You know, graphs and charts about the budget, about the process. Instead of, you know, all the parents in attendance said, made the budget a lot easier to understand from that document and liked that it was available online and in hard copy as well. Um, parents, uh, let's see. So we talked about the Student Readiness Plan. Parents liked that everything is all in one spot. Uh, they, you know, there, there were some parents there of seniors who didn't use the Student Readiness Plan as much as other, you know, for obvious reasons. Um, but still, um, had some interaction with it. Some, some students, you know, when parents expressed an interest in logging into the Student Readiness Plan, said, "No, no, no, I'm already doing that at school with my counselor." So, you know, there's nothing our committee can do about that. So, um, but did appreciate that it's all in the one place and that it is, uh, accessible to everyone. Um, also talked about, um, a student who had experienced a glitch and had gotten it fixed by going to tech services. So we talked about, uh, you know, who, who you can speak to if you have an issue with the online application software. Got that sorted out. Um, and then lastly, the most important item, I would say, the most popular one, is that, um, parents are going to be able to use, um, credit cards for every single student fee, all in the one place, which has not been the case until now. So student, all the fees that we've just voted on and any other thing that, um, you know, is associated with a student activity, didn't used to be the case that you could log into one software, pay with a credit card and then just have it be done and have access to receipts. It used to be a lot more difficult to organize, log into various websites. Now it's all in the one place and parents seem extremely excited about, about that in particular. So, um, oh, and then lastly, uh, one issue, the last meeting, so not this meeting, the meeting before, parents brought up that on late start days, uh, that the bus tracking app that we use, the Geo Locator App, uh, didn't reflect the schedule of the late start days. And that issue, um, we wouldn't have known about that issue if it not had been for this committee. That issue has since been fixed. So now the bus app does work on those late start day schedules. And that's the rundown of our meeting.
Quick question. Are all activities then mandatory that they use that single pay credit card application? So bands, fundraisers, parent clubs, all of them are required? They, they have no option to opt out and they're receptive to that? Cause that does, you know, they have to relinquish a, a certain amount of control.
Um, it is not required. People will still be able to pay by check or cash should they choose to do that. But, uh, any of the, um, the credit card transactions would be loaded through that, that software system.
So then, like currently, my son's in Conant Band and we, we write a check to the Conant Band Club for an activity. That would still then be the process? That entity would still exist to collect funds on behalf? Or would that then be processed through the, the district?
Uh, the, the method would not change as far as if there is a, an organization that's you're making the check to, that would still continue. This would just be, um, an on-behalf system that would be able to collect fees that would be specific to the district. So examples, um, you know, there may be a t-shirt sale or something that would take place through the band and those, uh, those particular items would be able to li, be listed in the school store and would be able to be purchased by parents for that particular event.
It's not mandating that you pay by credit card. It's putting, it's giving an option to pay by credit card where it didn't previously exist.
Right. I was just trying to figure out how we send the money from the district to the organization? If they file a reimbursement or if it's already pre-established that that activity has an earmark or how that funding is tracked? So, I mean, I could see myself paying with credit card for $50 and then it never gets to the band or I'm not sure how they...
Yeah, on the backend, there's an account number that's tied to everything. So another example would be the booster, um, passes that would be, or packages that would be available. And there is a reporting mechanism by which those funds would then be allocated back to the organization.
Subtracted by account.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Just a point of clarification on that. So if you were to write the check to Conant High School and some person might not know it needs to go to the band, actually, this system cleans up a lot, a lot of different loose variants that this is going to be very, very much appreciated by, by our families and, and our school people, uh, on both ends. So a lot, a lot of people have put a lot of time and energy into it to expedite this. We looked at multiple systems and, uh, we're very pleased to be able to, to go green with this for the upcoming, upcoming school year.
All right, next, uh, we have our upcoming events, announcements, calendar items. And then finally, we have completed our closed session, so we will just go to all of the motions related to that. So first, we have acceptance of retirement requests. The suggested motion is that the Board of Education accepts the retirement requests of Robert Gotti, effective December 2022, according to the master contract of the District 211 Operations Maintenance Group, Dolores Glagowski, effective May 2021, according to the master contract of the District 211 Teachers Union, and Linda Jones, effective December 2021, consistent with the master contract of the District 211 United Support Staff. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye. Next, we have Administrative Appointments. First suggested motion, that effective July 1, 2020, Kimberly Glazer be appointed as 12-month Assistant Principal at Palatine High School at a gross salary of $145,750. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye. We have a suggested motion that effective July 1, 2020, Thomas McCown be appointed as 12-month Assistant Principal at Hoffman Estates High School at a gross salary of $145,750. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye. We have a suggested motion that effective July 1, 2020, Amanda Hughes be appointed as 12-month Assistant Principal at William Fremd High School at a gross salary of $134,000.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye. We have a suggested motion that effective July 1, 2020, Mary Kate Smith be appointed as 12-month Assistant Principal at Schaumburg High School at a gross salary of $135,750.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye. We have a suggested motion that effective August 3, 2020, Dane Henning be appointed as 10-month Assistant Principal at James B. Conant High School at a gross salary of $115,000.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.[1676.08]
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye. Next, the settlement agreement concerning the State Court case. The suggested motion is that the Board of Education approve the settlement agreement with a former student to settle litigation in the Circuit Court of Cook County and authorize the payment of one hundred fifty thousand dollars in accordance with the settlement agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, um, I think that when we look at the current events occurring, um, this past week, I've, I've taken and, and read the, read the arguments that are before the Supreme Court on the issue. Um, and it's not clear how that will, that ruling will come across. I think, I think by settling this decision before we've actually heard some of the legal